We're going to start out with item number one, vulnerability and resilience assessment presentation. Penny, do you want to cue us up on this?
Yes, thank you. Well, I'm really happy to be here and excited to be here this morning to share with you a project that is going to help make West Palm Beach have a more resilient future. And you know, if I'm here, it's probably talking about climate change. So I want to just lay the groundwork a minute about types of things that we do with addressing climate change. So there's really two big categories. There's mitigation and adaptation. And mitigation is when we're talking about greenhouse gas emissions, you know, tracking it, reducing it, and the kinds of activities that we can do. So increasing your energy efficiency.
LED lights.
LED lights, different kinds of alternative fuels, solar, converting our fleet to electric, and even our tree canopy improvements as those help sequester some of the greenhouse gases. So that's the mitigation part. And then there's adaptation. So adaptation is really looking at how can we prepare for the future, the changes that we're anticipating with climate change, and make our plans different and, you know, if it means building things differently or looking at things differently. And that's what we're going to be talking about more today. So adaptation would be thinking about things like we're going to have stronger storms. There may be more periods of real dry, so there may be droughts. It may be when it rains, we're getting tons of rain like we've seen recently all at once. It could be sea level rise, although we're certainly better positioned than our sister cities to the south, but certainly that's what we need to prepare for as well. It could be heat. You know, what's the productivity that we're going to expect out of people that work when the temperatures are up in the 90s all the time, or not all the time, but more. So these are the kinds of things that we're looking at, and how do we plan for that? How do we know what our assets are so that we can see which of those are more vulnerable than others? So we are working right now on a resilience assessment that is looking at those assets, looking at those threats, and then helping us identify them and then prepare for them. We are, well, part of what this does as well is help us meet one of the commitments we've made to the Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy. And what they want us to do is they want us to identify our greenhouse gas emissions, track them, be transparent about it, develop a climate action plan, and then act on that plan. Well, we've had a vulnerability, excuse me, we've had a sustainability action plan for a while. We're in the process of updating it. We're rolling in our STAR Communities target objectives. We're looking at all those other commitments that we've made, and we're also working with the Southeast Florida Regional Climate Compact, their climate action plan to address that and pull it all together into one plan. But what this resilience assessment that we're going to be talking about today does, it makes it granular. It's all about West Palm Beach and then how we can use that to make better choices in the future.
Penny, can you just take a minute to talk about the STAR rating for the new commissioners?
Yes.
So we can make sure they understand what that is.
Love to. So STAR Communities is a nonprofit that has been around for about four years right now, and it looks across the board at seven areas within resilience and sustainability. It rates communities on a very prescribed set of criteria. We went through about a year-long of assessment, and we were very happy to have a four-star rating. There are three, only three ratings, three-star, four-star, and five-star. We're the only four-star city in the state of Florida, and we are working for that five-star. And that's why we're trying to, you know, really look at this assessment as a baseline and then see where we need to go to the future.
And the other thing you'll note when we do our strategic planning, if you look at strategic plan, the seven areas in the strategic plan are the seven areas from the STAR rating system. So we incorporated it throughout all of our departments because we know it's important that we're financially resilient, you know, all of our water supply is resilient. So it goes across all departments.
Yes. So this is really just helping us with those greater goals and achievements that we're working for, which is to keep our city the wonderful place it is to work, live, and visit. So with that, I'd like to introduce Jim Fox. He is with NEMAC. NEMAC, and I hope I get this right, is the National Environmental Modeling and Analysis Center that is at UNC Asheville, and he is also working with another partner, Fernleaf Interactive, which he'll tell you more about. Jim?
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you. And please feel free to stop me at any time. I want to make sure I answer your questions here during this briefing as well, too. You'll see the partnership between NEMAC and Fernleaf is representative of what's called a public-private partnership. I'm sure you've heard a lot about those as the nation is moving ahead to be looking at some of these challenges, to be moving this sort of information out of science and research into the commercial space. And that's exactly what you're seeing sitting through here is Fernleaf is the commercial partner. I run the Applied Research Center. And so hopefully also you're familiar nationwide with the U.S. Climate Resilience Toolkit. This was launched during the previous administration, and the White House approached our group through NOAA to put together the resilience toolkit for them. And you can see then that when you start looking at an approach like this, the idea was for any municipality, any jurisdiction of any size in the nation, to be able to make their start, to understand what the issues were, what they were facing, and how to build resilience. And so we're the group that's put that together. We also maintain that. If you actually go onto this now, you'll actually see that this is moving over to our servers as well, too. And I don't need to point out to the mayor why that's going on. In fact, with NOAA being part of the Department of Commerce, even at NOAA, the words "climate" are starting to be removed from their mission. So nationwide, we are...
How do you remove "climate" from NOAA's mission?
I don't know, but I'm not wise enough to be able to ask those questions.
Nor am I.
But the leadership at the municipal level becomes very important. And thank you for supporting us mayors and some of the progressive states for understanding the importance of this as well, too. So it's not only sites like this, but also the National Climate Assessment is moving over. So I'm happy to say I'm writing one of the chapters for the new National Climate Assessment through the support of the group of mayors, the state of New York, and the American Meteorological Well, here's where we're working. So you can see that West Palm Beach is one of the projects we're most proud of. We've just finished this work for the Triangle Cities of North Carolina. That's Raleigh, Durham, Chapel Hill, and Cary. I come from the city of Asheville. One reason we're located there, that's also the nation's center of climate and weather data. So if you need to access any climate and weather data nationally or internationally, the nation's repository and the scientists that look after all that information is located in Asheville. My center was formed to be able to get that data out of the government's hands into the commercial sector and then create jobs around that as well, too. You can see that, you know, we've worked many years with Broward County, Fort Lauderdale, Dr. Geronimo there, and other states and cities across the southeast. Well, let's talk about what the problem is. The problem is a combination of things that you face daily, urban growth, right? How do you plan for where your growth is and how do you do that intelligently? But you pair that with the second graph, and the second graph is billion-dollar disasters. And I think you can see the shape of that curve. That curve is not all over the place. It's definitely heading up. And you can see then what is also happening is there's a shortfall of federal funding. Federal funding is only covering about 30% to 35% of the impact of those billion-dollar disasters. And the private insurance sector is only covering another 30% to 35%. Well, then who's left with the remaining 30% to 35%? Well, that would be you as municipalities. And municipalities are definitely getting this. Local governments are saying this is a problem. It's not going away. We need to be able to address it proactively. And also then groups like Moody's, who underwrites your bond ratings, are also now coming directly to you and saying, if you want to keep your AAA bond rating so that you can borrow money at the best rate, you need to show us that you're working on resilience because otherwise you're a greater risk, and, you know, we can't lend that money to you because that's a greater risk to us as well, too. So this is changing from a conversation between scientists to a conversation that's being led by leaders like you and your chief financial officers because it is impacting your bottom line. Well, what is resilience? Pretty simple curve, but if you look at time moving across the bottom and the capacity of your city, or why is it the people like to live and work here, that you establish a baseline and that when a hazard occurs, it drops you below that baseline. And if you're in a situation like Katrina or more recently Houston, you know, you drop very far off that baseline, and it takes a long time to get back up to that level that you want to be looking at. What resilience is all about is investing now for a better future. And this green triangle is about this resilience assessment and then looking at options it's creating for you, realizing that you don't have unlimited funds, that you need to be using your dollars wisely, and you need to be balancing those dollars in lines with your comp plan, your sustainability plan, and your emergency management plan. This is not giving you another plan. Resilience hooks into every three of those and fits into the way your city staff works with us as well, too. But if you invest wisely, then when those hazards occur, because they're going to occur, we can't stop the hazard. But you don't drop as far down, and you bounce back quicker. And so resilience is all about investing so that you can bounce back quicker, and that's what we're going to be talking about. So what's the solution? Well, the solution's three-fold, that within the U.S. Climate Resilience Toolkit, there is a risk analysis framework called the Steps to Resilience. That's the exact set of steps that we're working with you as a city through. We have completed the first step, and we're in the middle of the second step. That's what I'm here today to be working with your city staff in the afternoon for looking at the vulnerability and risk assessment. What this is doing is giving you then the middle key part of this, and that's a quantified assessment. Quantification becomes important because then you really can compare one thing to another to be making wise choices about where you're spending your money. It's not like, oh, I think the seawall might be more important to us than maybe an improvement to the stormwater system or actually working to, you know, fix this one critical intersection. Those things are prioritized, and they're quantified because it's the third part that is really critical, and this is coming up with implementable options. What are things that are going to work within your city with the funds that you have available and that your citizens will support? All three pieces are critical for this sort of things. So I'd like to talk about, you know, what some of the main points are following the exposure assessment. Now, this is a map of South Florida, and hopefully from across the room you can see some of the different colors, but the color in green is looking at three to six feet of elevation. And then if you're looking at the yellow, that is going from six to 12 feet, and then the tan is from 12 to 20 feet. West Palm Beach is in the box at the top, and then the inset map is showing you in detail. What you can see is you have a higher average elevation, much higher, than your neighbors to the south. You also are not seeing very much green. And you can see for Broward County and Dade County, you also have these green lines that are cutting across that coastal ridge. Those are those rivers that are sending through there as well, too. Well, for the same reason that the early railroad came in and set up your community is now a real benefit for you as well, too, and is probably going to be driving your growth as people look to be maybe migrating from the southern two counties into your county and city. So when you start then looking at this, that a big point is this inundation or flooding from sea level rise and storm surge, as Penny said, is still important, but it's more limited compared to your southern neighbors. And this is what the South Florida Regional Compact is showing you as well, too. However, these heavy precipitation events, which is driving these rainfall-induced flooding, which is the studies that you're investing in right now through collective water and your stormwater plan, this is your main challenge. And the impact not only includes the properties it's impacting, but also how you get into those properties, right? If a business does not have access to it due to a flooded street, then it cannot be in business during that time as well, too. So it's just not the location of the business, but access to it, especially true for emergency response as well to medical facilities. But when you start then looking at this across here, it's also for, you know, your citizens' residences because people, when they want to be looking at things that they value, ask three or four main questions. You know, where do I live? Where do I work? Here in South Florida, where do I play? And how do I get between those? And so this is assessment, you know, looks at those. So we also know that for your city that there's some socioeconomic strengths, but there's also some challenges. You've got a broad range of economic disparity across your city, which sets up social vulnerability, which is integrated in this as well, too. And finally, resilience is just as much about regional planning. You know, why is it that you're planning with the compact across here? That transportation issues, a lot of the people that work in your city during the day do not live in your city. They commute in. You have to be looking at those issues, too. And it's planning for opportunity. Resilience is not a conversation just about threats. It's also about how do you plan for your economic vitality and to keep it strong today because resilience is about investing today for what's good today as well as that future. So let's take a look at what we're doing. Number one, congratulations for the investment you've already made. You've got a world-class GIS system. GIS is the mapping. It's the geographic information system. We're tying directly into that, integrating into that system, and then giving the information right back into that system. That allows us then, and you can see this is a map of where your commercial parcels and buildings are. The inset map on the far side shows individual structures and parcels. That's the detail we're going down. We're saying every parcel, every building. But then we're rolling it up to a neighborhood level. And so if you look across your city, the darker colors of yellow are actually where more of your commercial activity is going on. You know, you can look at your city for, you know, where is that actually happening? As I said, then we go ahead and integrate the threat information. This is the investment you're making right now through an engineering company here, Collective Water Resources. They're putting out an excellent flood model. We're using that investment to make sure that this is as up-to-date and accurate as possible. Remember the importance of quantification. And you can see then from their maps that this is much, much, much better than your FEMA flood maps that are coming from the federal side. So again, you know, wise choice for investing in this sort of information because then when you start looking at the combination of that key asset of commercial property and that threat for rainfall-induced flooding, what properties are most exposed in your city? That if you're having to prioritize, what do you need to start paying attention to right now to be able to keep your businesses vibrant? And that's what we're looking at through here. And for the workshop this afternoon, then we're starting to move from just not where things are exposed, but moving from the idea of vulnerability. And so you can see on this map sitting through here that the blue areas are floods, the gray areas are showing where you're exposed to flooding. But the other map on the other side starts coloring in those areas in darker shades of red because even though three of these buildings are equally exposed to flooding, which of these three houses would you prefer to own during a flood? Equally exposed, but very different vulnerability, right? Because this one with most activity going on above the garage or that one that's been built up above a certain flood elevation, much less vulnerable to the flooding than the one in the middle. So this is what the analysis is doing. And if you look then at what we're working with, we've now moved from exposure to the idea of, okay, what areas within the city have a higher vulnerability and risk? Notice that this is labeled draft right now. This is what we're working with your city staff on, is to establish the best rule sets to be able to make those maps as most accurate as possible. But again, you can start saying in some of these neighborhoods that if you're getting into the highest ranking, you've got anywhere from nine to 49 commercial properties in that area that have some higher vulnerability. Well, I talked about the third most important part about this, though, is moving toward implementable options. We don't want to be talking about the problem. We want to be looking at the solution, and we want to be looking at affordable solutions that fit into the direction that you're going right now. This is why we're working in an integrative process with your staff and other consultants. The assessment is designed so that it fits right into your planning framework, and it instantly upgrades as you get those upgrades to your other studies, and it yields easily communicated options that each of you can go out to your citizens, business leaders, and communicate what everybody needs to be doing, working together to be, you know, building their resilience together. Because remember, resilience is about this wise investment, this green triangle. So what's the range of options that's on the plate? Well, we're looking at engineering projects. These are things that you're already investing in right now. And which of those are the best ones to be doing first, second, and third? Stormwater system upgrades and seawall improvements, tidal valves, road redesign improvement? You know, where do you need to keep investing for some additional data, just like you've invested in the flood work with collective, some of the other new surveying that you've done, some of the studies that you're doing out of grassy waters? You also need to be putting together the communication plans. How do you get this out to the right people to be, you know, knowing why you're investing in those and getting them on board? Obviously, integration into optimal economic development locations, that this is something that's coming out, especially here in South Florida. People, as they're beginning to want to locate new business locations, really want to know, have you done your homework? You know, where's a good place for me to be able to build? You've got the information to be able to attracting those new businesses sitting through here. Updating your ordinances and policies, which you're already very proactive on, and then as we've talked about, this regional responsibility and partnerships and building those. Well, how do we know these investments are worthwhile? I'd just like to close with telling you a little story. I live in Asheville. Hopefully, some of you have visited our fair city and have visited...
It's a beautiful city.
Visited the Biltmore Estate. 2004 floods.
Right.
If you've visited the Biltmore Estate, that's the entrance to Biltmore. Okay? Same sort of story that you have here with these heavy precipitation events that are increasing, but heavy precipitation events caused these 2004 floods, and we had a $200 million impact. $100 million of that was due to business interruption. Okay? How wet was your May here?
Very.
Yeah. We had a record wet May in Asheville as well, too. This is becoming the trend that we're all going to have to get used to, is increasing records. We had the same amount of precipitation in Asheville in 2004. The area outside Biltmore State, Biltmore Village, one of our prime tourism locations, again experienced flooding, but not nearly as severe and for not nearly as long. Just met with the business owners in Biltmore Village last week. $200 million in 2004? Looks like the number's going to come in a little under $2 million in 2018. What made the difference? There's a collection of actions and projects to build resilience that we as a city have been working on since the last floods, and they're paying off. Investing in resilience makes a difference for today and the future.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. What happened to Eloquent City?
Eloquent City decided to kind of keep business as usual. And also their view of risk was, well, we had a one-in-100-year flood recently. We probably don't need to worry about that for another 100 years. Well, at least in Asheville, that using the terms one-in-100 is not the right way to be looking at it. It's a 1% chance. But unfortunately, in the past 100 years, we've had those types of floods about every 20 years. Okay? This is the new reality that especially here in the southeast we're facing, that this increasing frequency and severity of heavy precipitation events means that the old way we look at floods is not the new way we need to. And unfortunately, Eloquent City, you know, made some improper or incorrect guesses about what their risk profile should look like. I think they're asking some very different questions today.
I hope so.
But, I mean, you know, that's a beautiful section of Eloquent. It's historically relevant.
Oh, yeah, it's a great city.
So these aren't easy decisions, but they are decisions that each of our cities, you know, will need to be facing about how they work from that point.
Okay, we do have some questions. Commissioner James?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Fox, that was a very fun presentation. I appreciate it. And this is maybe more for staff and the mayor. So as we start coming up with a plan for West Palm Beach, how do we prioritize areas? Is it simply, well, no, I'm not going to even guess. So what factors enter into the prioritization of where projects are implemented?
So maybe I could just give you a best example of the cities that we've just worked through the prioritization process. So this is Raleigh, Durham, Chapel Hill, Cary. It's an area of about 2 million people. But you first look at cost-benefit of your investment. You know, invest your money wisely. It's not just what your local engineers are going to tell you, but if you want federal support through the U.S. Army Corps or those, you have to have something like a two-to-one cost-benefit ratio. Number two is looking at, is it just? Is it fair? Is it investing, you know, where it makes the most sense? There are some areas of your city, just like in Raleigh and Durham, that you're going to be able to ask the local business owners and residence owners to join you. They have more resources to be able to do that. You're seeing this in Houston. But you compare Houston to New Orleans post-Katrina, that the socially vulnerable populations of Katrina did not have those resources. There are some areas of your city that you're going to have to look at this, too, is looking at the social vulnerability and where can you expect people to join with you as key stakeholders? Where do you have to help people? Because those people in those neighborhoods are willing to accept the responsibility, but a lot of times they just don't have the resources.
Penny, did you want to add to that?
Absolutely. Equity is always a big issue, and certainly as we see the risks, the threats, and how they're combined. What we hope to do is have a presentation for you that's going to give you the facts that Jim has explained, and then that will help you and guide you in making those hard choices sometimes. So we'll give you the facts if you guys get to make the decisions, you know... So we'll give you the facts if you guys get to make the decisions, you know?
And that's part of the why we engaged in this, so that we could have a better understanding about how to make these decisions, about where to put our money in, you know, where we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck. The other thing is that all of the projects that are moving forward have to have a sustainability, resilience component, so they have to build that into the projects as well.
That's right. That's the third metric, and again, it's why the sustainability directors are so critical in linking this across your city staff. It was actually the group of sustainability directors across seven different jurisdictions there in the triangle that banded together to say, we need to be looking at this regionally. So that's the piece. But probably what's most important for those of you at the table to note, too, is the fourth metric is, you know, financially and politically feasible options. There might be some really great ideas that would have a great bottom line, but they may be very expensive, or they may not be politically palatable for all the stakeholders involved. And that's just the reality we all work in, that those sorts of options have to be compared in that metric as well, too. So that's how other communities are prioritizing. We have a technique that we work with cities, and we're going to be working with as soon as the assessment's done, to be going through that exercise with your city staff as well, too.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you so much. I'm curious as to the timeline of this whole process, and then, once we get the plan, how often or what's the process for revisiting it, making sure that we're adhering to it?
Yeah. So we're, it's actually going to be going very rapidly through the summer now that, with the point we're at, we're asking for what we call rule sets for each of your assets. In other words, different types of ordinances or building codes. We've got all this into a digital form, and we're partnering with West Palm Beach on the piece of software that's actually keeps this up to date. So it's why it's critical this ties into your own GIS, that as your property records are updating, or as you're investing in a new threat assessment, those will go into this, and this will stay live. It will update, look at those parcels, be able to do those pieces as well, too. So you're investing in the foundation right now, then your city staff keeps this up to date. And that becomes a critical part because you're investing in building resilience, right? As you're investing in your stormwater or repairing a seawall, you want to be able to see the results of that. And you want to know then, okay, now that I've done that, what do I need to do next? And this is a technique that you're, you'll hear your southern neighbors talk about adaptation pathways. Because as you invest now, it changes your view of the future. And it's step by step, and that's the advantage of doing it this way, is you can keep this live to be making sure your investments are keeping up with the reality of things are changing. Because we're making assumptions about how things like sea level rise are going to be changing in the future, none of us can see perfectly into the future. There's a range there. We need to stay, you know, within the new information coming there will guide your future investments as well, too.
Commissioner Ryan?
I just wanted to add, excuse me, that the key really to this, this whole assessment is using it. I mean, it sounds pretty simple, but we all are very busy, we've got those deadlines in mind, it's easy to check a box off, but we're trying to set this up so that it is updating. The key is going to be having all of our departments check in and really using it. And then one other little thing, which isn't a little thing, but it's also going to tell us not just some of our asset threats as far as physical buildings or structures, but our people assets. So we need to think about if our temperatures are going up into the 90s for a longer period of time, or if we're experiencing droughts and, you know, downpours, maybe the productivity that we're expecting is going to change. So we can factor that in into how long it's going to take to do a project, what that project is going to cost, and how many people we might need.
And I have to tell you that our Sustainability Office has a history of planning their work and working their plan. We are focused on getting things accomplished, and we have goals, and they're working on those goals every day. Commissioner Ryan, you had a question, then I'm going to come back to you. Commissioner?
Thank you. And yes, to follow up on that, you know, we have been doing this for as long as I've been around, very, very well, and staying focused. But you mentioned that the regional impacts are very important. So maybe this is a question for Penny. How are we doing in the region? Are we working with other, either the county or the municipalities to try to, you know, build off of each other's projects?
Well, as a matter of fact, of course, the Southeast Florida Regional Climate Compact, I'm the city's representative for Palm Beach County, and I hate to call her out, but I'm going to get Megan Houston to raise her hand back there. She is the new Palm Beach County Resilience Director. And then Rebecca Harvey, who is with Boynton Beach, is here as well. I had invited them to hear this presentation and to sit in on our workshop this afternoon if they can make it. So we really are looking collaboratively at sharing information and seeing how we can leverage our resources together.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah. To put some real-life examples of why this is so important, you know, we did the stormwater master plan. Those were some pretty obvious projects that needed to be done because they were habitual flooding that we needed to take care of. But then, how do you address the next round of this? You know, we started, we've done a few tide gates, which are going to prevent the backflow during high, you know, high-tide events. But then, long-term, some of these, as sea level rises, you know, what do you do with that? Do you end up putting more of those, and then at some point, do you pump? Do you have to pump because you've got standing water too long, you know, standing in a place because you have more and more of these events occurring? I mean, you compare that against, you know, hardening, some areas you may need to retreat. You know, further south of here, they're having to face that right now. Thank goodness we're not in the condition of the other areas of South Florida, because they're looking at abandoning areas because there is just no answer to being able to have, you know, have homes and businesses in those areas. So these are all decisions that we're going to have to make, and that's why we really, I'm really excited about the tool we have, because we can do comparative analysis and try to plot out what the future holds.
Well, and I think we have another good example, and that is our water system. You know, back in 2011, we had the 500-year drought, and, you know, we were, you know, really in bad shape in terms of water. But since then, we've had similar drought conditions, and because of the actions we've taken to be able to respond to that, we haven't had a problem. And right now, you know, having a surface water system is a good thing because those folks who are going down the aquifer are going to be experiencing, are experiencing saltwater intrusion. So, you know, we have experience building a resilient city.
Yes, your surface water is such a great asset, it gives you more options than some of your neighbors. Obviously, you've got a few other challenges with things like algal blooms and how you handle those, but you have a baseline option for your drinking water that your sister cities to the south don't have. And so that's something you really need to rejoice in.
I can remember people in 2011 coming to me and saying, you have to change the water system, you have to change the water system. So glad we didn't back then. Commissioner?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. And to piggyback off of your comments, I actually had this conversation on the Brightline train yesterday with some folks that were coming up from Key Biscayne, who were telling me that they've already installed pumps. So it brought about the question for me, as we're looking where we're going to spend our infrastructure dollars, how do we best determine what is the long-term solution? Obviously, like you're saying, no one has a crystal ball, but when you're pumping water, you're basically sweeping a puddle, right? So it's going to keep coming back in. So how are we really trying to direct those dollars into the projects that are going to make the most impact long-term, and how is that determined?
Yeah, I would say, you know, it takes a team of people to answer that question. We'll be able to tank the resilience assessment, work with city staff, but again, working with other, you know, engineering firms that you partner with. You know, I've mentioned Collective. We partner with other engineering firms in South Florida that are looking at this. I mean, Fort Lauderdale, we're doing a large study with, their choices are not as broad as what you have. But I think you have to look at, you know, the vibrancy of today balanced with the vibrancy of the future with uncertainty on top of it. And, you know, just like was being said here, you're investing for today as well as tomorrow, and some of your investments, especially for stormwater, you know, become really critical because that's a little bit, probably a larger risk that you're facing, this fall-induced flooding. And so already, some of those things are coming out. But it's going to be this iterative process that you're going to keep hearing about over the next several months for this partnership. But I think you're going to be looking more at the things that you're already talking about for solutions, rather than having to look at some of the stuff that Key Biscayne is looking at right now.
To follow up, so we're basically looking at a short-term and a long-term plan.
So I think, you know, you always have the option, if you anticipate, let's just say, flooding is going to be at a certain level, you could build and set your ordinances to the top of that expectation today. But it may not happen. So you also could say, okay, we're going to set our ordinances or our building to a level that we see, I'll just pick a number, by 2030. And then, as we become more aware and have, actually see those results, you can see whether is that going to be enough? Or let's say that we may not be able to build to the level today that could be needed, but we can build in a way that we could add on to or change. So we don't want to put electrical rooms on bottom floors anymore, you know? Or we want to have the infrastructure in the building to move some things around. So there are some things we can do that are a little bit more cost-effective today that is definitely preparing, but we're not overdoing it for something that we're not sure yet of when it's going to happen.
Okay. Commissioner James?
Thank you, Mayor. I seem to recall one of the slides showing either communication with stakeholders or whatever. My question is, I presume as part of this process, there would be an outreach to the business community as well as residents in some of those socially vulnerable areas? And I was just curious how that, how that process will play out, just to ensure that everyone is at the table, has an opportunity to be at the table.
Well, to begin with, that's a process that we're going to come back to you for, to see what is it that you want to have public facing and what is just an internal facing for the time being? For example, we may show some vulnerabilities, but if you don't have all of the background, you may see a vulnerability map and really overreact when it's not, that's not really what it's meant to tell you. So there'll be steps as we go developing this that we'll be sharing, both, you know, internally and then, again, with y'all's guidance to the, to the community. And then we'll, we definitely will, once we have a more solid plan, because we're still in the, you know, the planning parts now, develop an outreach program.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Fox. Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
Penny, thank you. Very well-done presentation. We look forward to continuing our work together.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for your time today.